So with that, let's bring tonight's meeting to order. Welcome to the Tuesday, August 25th, 2020 Planning Board Meeting for the Town of Wakefield. So we are still under the open meeting laws and there's been some changes to those. Under the COVID restrictions that we have are, so that's something that if anybody has any questions about that, you can go to the state website and see. Call to order. We have a bunch of items on tonight's list. I'll run down them quickly. So approval of meetings from June 22nd and July 22nd, 28th. We're going to table that until we get a better handle on this. Susan and I are clerk. We've been working on a way to do this properly to get the meeting minutes to sync with the recorded parts and all that. So we're going to work on that this week and get that all straightened out and we'll have all of the meeting minutes sent out to the planning board members. So next meeting, we can review them and if there are any questions or discussions, we can do that then. Item number three related to discussion for zoning amendment for the savings bank. And if you might remember during the town meeting, there was a few zoning amendments proposed. And this was one of them that did not pass. So we will review that tonight. And Attorney McGrail is here to lead that discussion. Lovis Ave Extension Public Hearing and we'll, we'll get to that one. 14 Montrose School Lane, I went by once earlier and then I went by today because I wanted to see, it's been about two weeks since I went by. So I'll give a quick update on that. Glendale Ave, Ospe Lane, Matt will give us an update and review and discuss applications for planning boards vacant seats. We've invited the three applicants here this evening. One of the applicants is no longer interested with a lot of other responsibilities. So he will not be in that discussion tonight. Items not anticipated by the chair and action items, board elections, if we get to that at the end, we can, we can discuss it then. Okay, so before we, if you're on, please mute. Thank you. And let's see, Attorney McGrail, how do you want to handle this? If there's an order, you have, it looks like three items on tonight's.
I actually have item three and item four.
Okay.
I am not here.
Yeah. Oh, I thought you were running for a planning board vacancy. No, you're not going to be here for that. All right.
Not yet, not yet.
All right. All right, thanks. Okay, so how would, how do you want to handle this as far as order?
I just, the order is in, it's fine, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Bob DeBella is here from the savings bank, so.
Okay.
And I don't think item four is going to take too too long.
Okay, I'll stop sharing my screen. And if you'd like to go ahead and do a quick introduction.
Sure, thank you, Mr. Chairman. For the record, Attorney Brian McGrail here on behalf of the savings bank. With us is Bob DeBella, who's the president and CEO of the bank and.
I'm sorry, can you, Andrew Campbell, could you please mute? Thank you.
And Tom Galvin, who was, who's the architect for the savings bank is also on tonight. I asked for this to be put on the agenda, as you had mentioned, Mr. Chairman. And the savings bank was the sponsor of two zoning amendments at the June 20 town meeting, both of which were supported by your board. One was a zoning map amendment that passed. And the second was a text amendment relating to specific dimensional type relief for, for financial institutions, offices and professional offices in the business district that was presented. That, that effort received a majority vote, more than a majority vote at town meeting, but it did not meet the two thirds requirement. At the town meeting, there were a few folks that brought up some concerns with it, with the article. But the consistent theme of the folks that spoke, even the folks that spoke against us at town meeting was that they were big fans of the savings bank and their commitment to the community and their philanthropic efforts in the community. And the, and the theme was, you know, tighten it up and bring it back. Because we, you know, we as a community would like to continue to try to support the savings bank and their efforts. So that is what we plan on doing for the November town meeting. I wanted this on the agenda because I've, I've actually started working on this. But I haven't, you know, I really haven't done a formal draft. And I thought it'd be a good idea to have a discussion with the board before I do that. Because normally you know, when, you know, a citizen's petition for a zoning change or a property owner, one drafts it and then files it with the, with the town council and it gets referred to your board. And often you don't see it until it arrives. Now that you, your board has a flavor of what we're trying to accomplish, I thought it would be a good idea to have a discussion with your board before I draft it. To see if there's, you know, from your reflection of town meeting, things that you might want to see in what we will propose. Just to refresh your memory, because it goes back to June. I've had the opportunity to watch the tape of the town meeting a few times. And in really, you know, I use the word tighten up the bylaw because that was kind of the theme. There were two components to the text bylaw. One offered relief from the dimensional requirements of table two broadly, except for height. You might remember height was eliminated. And the second one involved relief from a specific section of the bylaw, 19031G, which deals with a budding residential districts and the business district. We're going to eliminate that second one. There's really no need for that. We looked at it. So we're actually going to take that out. So now what we're, what we're going to focus on is special permit relief for the dimensional requirements. There's not a need, banks, as we looked at this, banks don't need relief from everything. We, we believe that the critical components are the floor area ratio. We had talked about that the first time we presented this. The minimum open area in the maximum building coverage. And then also front setback, because in the business district, everything is, you know, pretty much built on the street. But there's no, there's no need for relief for height. There's no need for relief for setback in the rear side, frontage, lot area. There's, you know, that we, I do not want to build that in the bylaw. I'd like to keep this as, as simple and with as little relief as possible. So I think what Bob and I talked about in our reflection of the town meeting, and what I'm, what I plan on working on with this is that the reason we, the reason we had it before is financial institutions, offices, professional offices is because that is a line item in the table of uses. And, you know, they're all bundled together. So that's why we included those. And as you know, financial institutions, you know, have offices, you know, accessory to their uses. And I talked a little bit about that at town meeting, you know, uniquely financial, financial institutions is not even defined in our zoning bylaw. And if you look at the common, the common definition of it, if you look in the dictionary, it would include banks, but it would also include insurance companies, investment companies like fidelity. So, you know, it is pretty broad. And I think that that was one of the concerns at town meeting as I reviewed the tape. That gee, this might not just be banks, but it could be office buildings. It could be, you know, fidelity moving in with a, with a tall building that, you know, we might not want in our business district. So what I, what my thought was is, is I think it would be satisfactory to the community. If we typed it up and kind of gave a definition to a bank and put it in the bylaw and, and limited this relief to banks and also to banks that have employees at their place of business. So it wouldn't be like an ATM machine just in the building. And also to further limit it that it would only be banks in the building themselves. So it won't be like, gee, it could be a bank in a separate office building that has nothing to do with it. Well, since the bank is in there, the whole building could get relieved. No, we would limit it to standalone banks in the business district, in defined bank and defined bank building. And then again, limited to those forms of relief that I just had talked about earlier. And reviewing the tape at town meeting, I think that that would address a lot of concerns of the community that were raised on this article during the town meeting debate. I also had an opportunity to reach out to two of the individuals who spoke at town meeting with the concerns. Because, you know, I'm trying to make this, open it up. I'd rather get comments before. And, and I kind of went, I went with both of them. I went through, you know, my thoughts as I am with you tonight. And, and they, they liked it. They, they thought that that would address the concerns. And they were kind enough to say that they'd like to take a look at it. They volunteered to take a look at the draft that I would prepare to provide comment.
Okay.
So that's, that kind of gives you a flavor for, you know, what, what we're thinking about. And, you know, we'd love to, to hear what you have, what your thoughts are, if there, if you have any.
The first thought, and I know this has come up before and it would just, it would just be good to hear the explanation again. Why go through all the zoning change when you can apply for a variance or to the ZBA?
Just because, you know, with the variance, there might be an opportunity to get it with the ZBA. But there's, we believe in this area that there's, there's a high likelihood of potential appeals that could happen. And if there's an appeal of a variance, after going through that expensive and timely process, the chances on winning that at, in land court or superior court are not great. So one is very vulnerable on, you know, on that type of relief. And, you know, I think, you know, and, you know, this isn't just for the savings bank. We talked about the other banks that supported this article. You know, I think, you know, we as a, as a town need to send a message to these banks that are so critical to our downtown and business districts that, you know, we support you, we're giving you a path that you can plan your future because, you know, a special permit is a reasonable, reasonable ask and something that's very defensible. So plan on staying in downtown because there's opportunities for you to grow within reason versus, you know, planning your future five years now from going to have to ask for a variance that potentially could be appealed.
All right, thanks for explaining. And I know at town meeting, there was a lot of comments and I have to say again, it's, it was good to hear from a couple of people from the town. And I know Matt was at town meeting and heard everything too. And Bill, if you have any comments for Attorney McGrail about this, that would be great to share.
We, we, if I can just add, we, we listened to town meeting, you know.
Right.
We, we use as our experience, I think, you know, some of the issues were brought up. We understand the concerns. So we don't want to go back, you know, we're not sitting here saying, we're going to go back again with what we had and try again. You know, that won't be appropriate because, you know, we would not be addressing the failed attempt at town meeting and, and the failed attempt, because it didn't address all the concerns that were raised. So.
Right, and we did have three or maybe even four public hearings for, in public discussions. And we did get some feedback. You mentioned about the height. Matt, Bill, do you have any comments for Attorney McGrail or how do you want to approach this?
I think one thing, and it didn't really come up, Tom meeting, I was a little surprised was, was parking. You know, you're kind of densifying that area with office space. Where are people going to park? You know, what's the plan for that? So I think you should be prepared to address that when the next go around, because I think that's going to be an issue.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, that's good.
If I could put something out there, just a consideration, because, because this was talked about. You know, our, our main business districts in town are downtown, going through the junction, Downwater Street, then Greenwood is a major business district. North Ave, you know, across from the train station. Albion Street, right? I mean, those are, you know, and I'm sure I'm missing some, there's some scattered areas of business districts outside of the downtown area. But the business district does not include a lot of the limited business, like limited business district is different. Neighborhood business district is different. So, you know, like the Converse Building at the Head of Lake is not business district. You know, a lot of, as you go into Edgewater Park, it's industrial zoned. So it's not a huge part. One of the things that, you know, I wanted to discuss with the board and get your thoughts was like maybe doing an overlay district and limiting it to just downtown. So, you know, because that was kind of discussed at town meeting.
I don't know, we did the overlay district for the assisted living. In my experience, I think we did all for the marijuana dispensaries, but that was a little bit different. And I think the only overlay district that I was involved with was for the assisted living. And that worked out. And I can't remember exactly going through, but is it, is it worth going through an overlay district? What if something is just outside of that, that the savings bank or another bank wants to pursue? Then it becomes an issue. So yeah, maybe we just stick with the zoning change. And it, I mean, you know, the board was in favor of the previous one. And it was good to hear at town meeting all the comments. So I, I think it would be great to discuss more this evening. But it will also be good to see what you want, see what you have in writing.
Yep.
And present it to the board and we can, on the next agenda for the September 8th. It's eighth, right? I think it's the eighth. We can put a public hearing, put a notice up for the zoning bylaw proposal for change amendment. We could do that. Is, and you talked about two specific line items. So limit relief to banks, standalone banks that also have employees. And what was the other line item? Because you mentioned that one. Or was it just a longer one?
Yeah, I mean, basically it will define banks and it'll be a very detailed definition of bags. I mean, basically that they're federally, state or federally licensed or chartered entities that have depository, you know, components and, and pay interest and pay withdrawals and make loans. So there's a, there's a very tight definition that I'm working on now. And then, you know, obviously accessory uses to the banks like conference rooms, offices, any, you know, cafeteria or, you know, customer lounge type thing, teller areas. And then, you know, basically to say that's a bank and then a bank building would be a separate definition. I might have mentioned that. The bank building will be a building that houses exclusively a bank as was just previously defined. And that will be entitled to the dimensional relief.
And we're, we're concerned about the definition because the existing savings bank with the acquisition of the building behind it, with that whole opening of the building and passage through to that next building. I mean, this is why we're doing it, right?
That's right. So when you, when you look at the savings bank as an example, you know, what, once their campus is all connected, you have the new building that's connected to the main branch at 357, which is connected to the Oddfellows. You know, that basically takes up the entire property. So that's why in most of the properties downtown have a real hard time meeting the floor area ratio requirements because they, they just, they take up the entire building. So if you go over two stories, the floor area ratio in the business district is 1.5. So if you have, you know, you, you, you take the lot area, multiply it by 1.5 and that's the maximum floor area that you can have. So it's, 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 you know, for these, for these banks, it's really, you know, with their lobby areas that they have to have, it's almost impossible for them to meet that.
So let's talk about the FAR. So 1.5 in the business, neighborhood business is 1.0, limited business is 1.25. Would you want to have a number in there or just relief from the 1.5 number? Do you want to specify a specific number?
I, I would like to leave it to the zoning board, you know, to the special permit to, if, you know, you have to go through a special permit from them to get that relief. But there's going to be a cap on it anyways, because one thing we are not going to ask for is the ability to go higher.
Okay, so do you think?
Cap, cap what you're going to be able to do anyways.
So getting back to the written proposal for this, the line items. Do you want to address each of the columns under table one, table two for the zoning? Do you, is it, is it worth in there to make sure you address each one? That way, when it comes up at town meeting, you can say we've addressed each one and we want it to under special permit to show relief for these five or six.
You got it.
Ones, the other ones, we're not looking for relief on height. We're not looking for relief on whatever it might be. But we are looking for relief on frontage and width and floor area and front and side and rear.
Yep.
So I think if you got really specific about that in a town meeting, so when I was called up and after that day was just a crazy day, as you know, it was like so many hours sitting. And, I mean, I incorrectly spoke about this and it's just, it's easy to get confused. And I want to make sure that if we do go down, that's written with each of these restrictions. Either this is what we're looking for and we're not looking for this, I guess. I don't know, does that sound like a good direction to go in?
Yes. Oh, yeah. I, I, I agree that, you know, we will be, we will, we, you know, during your hearing process, we will make sure that we understand what the relief is and, and.
Okay.
It's limited to.
All right. Matt and Bill, do you have any other comments that you think can help?
I don't have anything.
All right, thanks, Bill.
No, not at this point.
Okay, so.
And I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, on the overlay. I just wanted to bring it up. And in the two, in the two folks that I talked to, they agreed to, you know, they said, you know, they don't think there's really a need for it.
So I'm going to change my mind then.
You know, the problem, the problem of the overlay is first of all, I think it confuses people.
Right.
And then, you know, the big debate is if you do an overlay and then you bring that overlay map to town meeting, then the debate is, well, how can we include that property? Or, you know, why, why did you go further? You know, and, and then you can't change that at town meeting. You can't, you can't expand it. You could take properties out, but you can't expand it because that's not what was published and what people thought was going to happen.
Well, I could see the scenario too, where there's another building behind a future savings bank or a future other bank. And it's right outside that overlay district and sorry. Well, you could go through the process again, as you know. All right, so why don't we, why don't we look at what the next couple of meetings are going to need to have? So if we just think to make sure we have all the ad and everything correct.
Yeah.
We want to show for September 8th is our next meeting. Let me quickly just look at a calendar. Okay, 8th, 15th, 22nd. So we have September 8th and we have September 22nd as our two dates. Do we know when the November meeting?
Yeah, I call the town administrator. I mean, he's only guessing at this point. He thought that it might be somewhere around the 16th, but.
Okay.
So it also could be a Saturday in November. That's going to be up to the town council to make that.
Right. So we definitely have time for three of these meetings. So we don't have to rush to September 8th, but if you want it on the September 8th agenda, you have the writing and everything.
I think we do have to push it a little bit because, because let's, let's talk about the process. So I, I think I want to write and I do, you know, I think we do need to have a working session.
Okay.
You know, because I, again, I want, before I just submit something to you and then we're kind of locked into that because that's what we submitted. And, you know, and then we're adding to that. I've already have a, you know, working session on the 8th. And then, you know, once that's done, don't forget, then we need to get on a town council agenda to submit it. And then they refer to your board and then we have to have the public hearing that has to be noticed in the newspaper.
Yep.
So that can take time. So I think, you know, that, that's probably, you know, we're probably looking at having that, that, you know, depending on what the town council agenda is, I know they meet on the 9th.
They do.
Do you know what they meet after that, Mr. Chairman?
No, but I think they're going back to their, I'm not sure, but I think they're not meeting on the 7th. Maybe it's the 7th and the.
I thought it was, I thought it was a night, but that doesn't make sense because.
No, that'd be a Wednesday. That's, that would be ZBA, yeah.
Yeah.
So I, I think it's either the 7th or the 14th.
Oh, my.
It might be the 14th, if I remember correctly. Because we had, we, the planning board will be.
I think it is the 14th.
At appointment.
So, okay. So what I would like to do is if we have a good working session on the 8th.
Okay.
And, and, you know, and, and, you know, we're satisfied, you know, then what I might do is, is submit it for that to the town council on the 14th, for their meeting on the 14th, to then refer it to your board for the public hearing.
Okay.
And then we do the advertising. So it could then be, you know, probably on for your meeting on.
22nd.
No, we make it. 13th.
To get the.
That will give you the 13th, the 27th. And, you know, probably it will give you at least two meetings to have the public hearings on the actual article.
Okay.
I mean, that could be.
October 13th. Who knows, maybe we'll be in town hall. Okay, all right.
So we would like this put on the agenda for, for September 8th. And I will get it to your board and I'm going to share it with the people. And, and, and I also would like to say, if I may, through you, if there's any folks, anyone in the public that would want to, you know, contact me to have input on this. You know, during my working stage before, please feel free to call me. I'm open to anybody.
We'll make sure it's in the meeting notes.
Yeah, I'm open to anybody contacting me.
And it's being recorded, so.
Yep, please do. The more, the better. We'll make a better bylaw.
Right, okay. Thank you. Any other comments from anybody else who's here this evening?
Yeah, I have one comment.
It's not a public hearing, so you don't have to state your name and address, so that's okay. I, I think. Yeah, you sure, you're fine.
I was just going to say that the dimensional requirements table, if we could actually see like the previous table and then the new table, what, and be able to compare them, have them side by side, that would be, I think, helpful.
Okay.
Yeah, that's a good idea. They're really highlighting those comments. And you'll need something like that for, like, that would be something good for town meeting to have, like, right next to each other too. Yeah, okay. Good comment. Thanks, John. All right. Thank you, Attorney McGrail.
Thank you.
If we, let me share my screen back to tonight's agenda. And Lovis Ave Extension, public hearing on Lovis Ave Extension. CM number 22-064018B. I don't have those memorized, but that's, um, if you'd like to go ahead and bring us back up to speed with where we are on Lovis.
Yep. I think, I think, John, up there's John.
Hi, John. He's here.
Like Hollywood Squares, sorry, pop up. Just to kind of bring the board up to speed. The last time, you know, I think where we are on this, we, we mentioned that we have an agreement with the butter on getting his fill. We're going to give him that little piece of land that we talked about. So we're modifying the plans in that regard. The last piece that we were working on, we made a commitment to the neighbors to do a site visit and, and talk about some mitigation. We were able to do that finally. We, we had it scheduled for a couple of weeks ago and then we had the big storm. And we did it last Wednesday night. We went out to Foster Street, met at Ellen Grossman's house, the Perringtons were there, Tedesco's. They were very, very gracious and welcoming. We appreciate it very much. And we had a nice site visit. We walked the property. We talked about a lot. We came up with a mitigation plan that we thought would be beneficial to the neighbors. They were happy with that. John Tedesco, who's one of the neighbors, is actually in the landscaping business. So we're working with John to put together a mitigation plan that will go on our property, will be protected by a covenant in perpetuity, like we've done before, with an obligation to maintain every place by the homeowners association. by the homeowners association. And so we're, so John Olgrin has sent that plan to Mr. Tedesco. John's gonna do, John Tedesco is gonna work with John Olgrin to come up with that, to then put it on your plan. Because it really needs to go on that subdivision plan as we discussed with the neighbors to make it binding in perpetuity as a condition with it bound by a covenant. And I think, I think the neighbors were very happy with that. They were wonderful to work with. So the only little issue we have with that is that there's a, the Conservation Commission implemented a 60-foot no disturb zone that extends from the neighbor's property onto our lot that we were not able to disturb. That's where these additional plantings would go. We do not, we don't anticipate, we're hoping that the Conservation Commission won't have a problem allowing us to plant more in there. But we got on, we're on their agenda Thursday night. They've already, they've already closed out and issued their order, but we're gonna go before them in a unified front with the neighbors to just get their blessing that they, they look at that as a minor modification and don't have any issue with it.
If I could interrupt quickly, were any of the Conservation Commission members on the site walk on Wednesday?
No, it was just, it was just us with the neighbors.
Okay.
Yeah. So, because we really didn't know what was gonna come of the site walk and then we, we all agreed that there'd be some great areas there to do some plantings, some arborvitae, some screening. And, but it's just in that no disturb zone.
Okay.
Again, I think the spirit of the no disturb zone is, is not to rip things apart. We, we don't think that they're gonna have a problem adding plantings in there. So, but we're gonna that with them. But so we don't wanna, that's kind of like the last thing that we need to tie up and so we, we, we can't say to your board and to the neighbors, we're gonna do that, make it a condition and then find out that the Conservation Commission won't let it happen.
Right, okay.
That's why we got on their agenda for Thursday night to clarify that.
Is there, just, just to move along, is there anything else we need to discuss or should we just wait until you go to the Conservation Commission and then you'll be back here on the 8th?
That's right. And, and I think, you know, coming back to the 8th, hopefully you would see modifications to your plan reflecting that screening if it's okay with the Conservation Commission.
Right.
Then I would have a draft, draft conditions in covenants, the way
Is that enough time for you to get us a plan by Wednesday, the second?
Sure, John, you can do that, right? As long as we, that, that will be our plan. We need Mr. Tedesco. He's working on that. So it's kind of out of John Olgrin's hands because he needs that from the other side. But, you know, that, we, we need to move this on our end, so we would like to be on the agenda for the 8th and hopefully to close this out.
Right, and if, for some reason, if it doesn't, we can just do, okay, we'll put it on for the 8th.
We think that, we think that will happen. That's our anticipation.
Okay. Any comments from the board?
Yeah, have you gotten any sense on how much material is coming off of that front lot?
We're gonna be able to get, get from the neighbor, Matt?
Yeah.
I think all of it.
All right.
Yeah.
What's?
That's, 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 that's the way we left it and we're gonna button that up to tighten that up to make that commitment. We understand you need that, so.
Okay, but again, do you know how much material is gonna, you're gonna have?
Oh, how much we need, Matt? How much we need? Oh, I don't know, John. I don't know if you have an opportunity.
No, I, no, I do not know how much material.
But there's plenty there.
And what's, what's form of the material is gonna be when it, when it gets to your site? So are you gonna, where's it gonna be processed?
On his property.
On his property, okay.
Yeah, which he's doing anyways. So this is gonna, this will save a lot because it's a couple of things. Now that, that material won't be trucked out and we won't be trucking material in. So I mean, I think that was your goal. It's, it's like a double benefit, if you
Correct, yeah. Trying to minimize, you know, damage to another town that we would be causing, so.
So it really works for everybody if we can accomplish that, which we, 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 we have an agreement that hasn't been signed, but it's, it's agreed to in principle.
All right, you're gonna have something in place formally before we vote on this, or?
Yeah, I, I think, I think you've kind of made that pretty clear.
Yep.
Yep, we understand where you're coming from. Got my attack dog here, sorry about that.
So the dog, all right. It's okay. So no comments, no other comments from the board? Any comments from the public? All right, thank you. So we'll anticipate September 8th. After the Conservation Commission meeting and plans to us by Wednesday, the second, so we can review. We'll anticipate a vote for that September 8th meeting. And the, the couple of items that we're really looking for is that this disturbed, no dessert, no disturbed zone to have plantings in there and of the goal of minimizing the amount of trucks moving back and forth, knowing that it's Wakefield-Stonemine and there'll be trucks back and forth. So where it's being processed and when you mentioned all of it, meaning all of the material that you're, you're gonna need is coming from the neighboring site, okay?
That is the goal.
Sounds good to me. Okay, any other comments?
I think you're all set on timeframe on this, Mr. Chairman. I think we extended. Is that showing your agenda just to make sure?
Yeah, let me, we bring, need to bring it back up anyway.
Yeah.
Let's look at the very bottom. We do LOVSA have, we extended it to October 31st.
Yeah, that's fine. Great.
That's the work of the clerk. Thank you, Susan. Okay. Next item on tonight's agenda is item number five, 14 Montrose School Lane. So just a quick review. I went out to the site two weeks ago and nothing was really there. There was a orange fence rolled up and there was a pallet of some materials, but that's it. So I went out there again today around 4:00 and the fence is up around the area. There's no difference in the height to where the pool is. No trees, nothing has been disturbed and there's materials off to the right side of the back of the house. So it looks like they're still working and getting, it looks like they're starting to work on the patio. But nothing's been staked out and there's been no disturbance. I didn't get to see the, the butter, the neighbor on the other side on the can't remember the name of the street, but on the, not Montrose School Lane, but the next one over, Wharton Park. So I'll go by again between now and the next meeting just to see where things are, but so far, so good. Any comments for the, from the board on this? No?
I, I, excuse me. I, I'm there too, a few weeks, maybe three weeks ago. It, it doesn't look like too much is being done.
Right, right.
Just the fences up and, you know, you really can't see anything.
Nope, nope.
Behind closed doors.
Right, well, that's, it takes a little while to get this worked on, especially now, everybody's busy. So item number six, Glendale Ave, Osiphe Lane. Matt, can you do a quick report? Sorry for laughing, but it's a good story.
We, we had a little, we were supposed to have a little site walk to go over trees that they wanted to potentially take out or leave, ones that were on the edge of the limit of work line. Now, the owner had contacted a few board members. We didn't want to have everyone out there because if we had, you know, three people would have to call a, a meeting, so they just wanted to discuss with us what they thought was going on. We had attempted to meet on a certain day and there was a miscommunication as to where to meet, so Bill Spalding and I were on one site, they were on another site. We just never met up, so. We, Bill and I didn't notice, you know, we walked around, we saw the Wettland Flags, oh, not the Wettland Flags, Limited Work Line and that they were numbered and we were able to get a plan that shows those numbers on there. That just came yesterday, maybe. I can't remember anymore. So I haven't had a chance to go out there and take a look. But I'm gonna go back and just see, see if we can figure out what's going on there and then, then we're gonna have a discussion as to extra, you know, they're thinking some trees on the edge may need to be removed because they may be not the best stock. And that may not, may not last after the clearing, but take a look at that. There's some nice trees out there. They all seem to be pretty strong. They have a good crown. So I think a lot of trees, once, once you remove the surrounding ones, they will stand up pretty well. So I don't think that's gonna be an issue.
Thanks, Matt. And we know it, they have a good crown because it was raining pretty good and we weren't getting that wet while we were in there. I'm excited about this going out. The, the flags that are out there, we're able to see a bunch of other trees too. So it, it does slope pretty good and there's a lot of rock on site, so it will be good to get back out there. Matt, let me know and it would be good to coordinate that. Mondays, Wednesdays and, Mondays and Wednesdays are better for me. Timing wise.
Okay.
All right, thanks. Bill, anything to add? Any comments on?
No, not at this time, no.
Okay, yeah, it's, it's getting there. Thank you. Let's see. Item number seven, review and discuss applicants for planning boards vacant seats. Again, I mentioned we, we did have three, now we have two. And I know Megan and Joanne. Megan, are you here tonight as well?
I am here. I'm, I'm dialed in. My the Zoom link wouldn't work on the computer.
Okay.
But I'm dialed in.
Oh, excellent. So I know, just reviewing, and I'm gonna stop sharing this. So I know for us reviewing applicants, this is the first time for me. I think Matt and Bill have reviewed applicants before. As you know, there are two seats available for the board. One seat for Paul Semenza will end in the spring of 2021, so that would be up for reelection. And then there's another seat that I believe goes two years. I'd have to check to make sure. But those are the two seats that are available. And I know after speaking with Matt and Bill about how we can do this, I just, Matt had a good idea to invite you all to the meeting tonight. So first of all, you can observe how things go. Joanne's been to a number of meetings now. And Megan, I'm not sure if you've been to the meetings, but I, I'm, I'm open to how we can handle this and I don't know if each of you want to do a quick introduction to why you're interested in the board and what you think the board will mean to you as far as your time and your, your goal for being on the board. I think that might be a good way to open it up. And, and then Matt and Bill, and if we have any questions beyond that, that would be great, but if Joanne, if you want to take a couple of minutes and explain a little bit about why you want to be on the board and what goal if you might have for our board, that would be awesome. Oh, you're muted. Let me unmute you. It was, I think I have to do it.
How about, can you hear?
Okay, you're, you're all set.
Yeah, so I've been living in Wakefield for a long time and I haven't been super involved in the town, but I heard about the opportunity at the planning board when I attended a Democratic Town Committee meeting. And they said, well, why don't you check it out, see what they're doing? So I started attending the meetings back in February. And I got a feel for what you were doing with a lot of the zoning bylaw changes and the, you know, the requests for zoning changes. And it seemed pretty interesting to me. I do want to make sure that the town stays a nice town with character. And I've heard people in town say, you know, they feel like it's getting a little overdeveloped. So I know that's a concern of some people. And I think we, we ideally need some kind of plan for what, what we want the town to look like in the future, in, in the longer term as well as in the short term. So some things that are of interest to me are affordable housing, which I know is something that's coming up as more of an issue now with that Crescent Street development. So that kind of thing interests me and, and just making the town, you know, the great place that it is, keeping it the way that we want it to be and still having it develop and be affordable for everyone else. And the other thing I think I mentioned in the application was I did have a real estate salesperson's license at one point. I don't anymore, but you know, real estate, obviously it's of interest to me. Does that help answer your question about why I'm interested?
Yeah, definitely does for me.
Yeah, me too.
Yeah, there's no wrong answer.
Yeah, there's no, there's no wrong answers.
Right.
I do, I, I just want to point out one thing is that just, you know, you both would be appointed for one year. So what happens is you, it's a one-year appointment. If the, whatever the term is at the end of that, whether it's it's up, like in one case with Paul Semenza's, you'd be up for reelection, you know, you'd have to be elected for a full five-year term. The other position, you would have to be, you'd have to run for election for the remainder of that term, so. So, or be reappointed again next year, so.
That's disappointing, Matt.
Yeah, getting, getting appointed right now does one good thing is it gives you a taste of getting on the board without a huge commitment. So I just want to look that up.
Yeah, so you were saying, so we'd be appointed for a year and then we'd run for reelection? And the term that we're running for reelection for would be different depending on which seat we're in?
Correct.
Correct. So actually Paul's seat would not even be a year. It would be over in March or April, April?
April.
Yeah.
Yeah, my only concern about that is doing it for that shorter period of time and then running for reelection, you don't really get a a great feel for it in that shorter period of time. But it's less of a commitment too.
Yeah, it's just the way the process is set up. You know, they, they can't appoint someone for five years, so it has, you have to go to the next elections. And that's how my, my first election on the board was for one year. And then I had to run again the next year for a five-year term. So it's, it's just part of the process.
Yeah, so it staggered, so each of us, our term will run out in a staggered way. So it's, somebody is gonna run out in 2021, 22, 23, each member. So that, that's the way the cycle works.
All right, so just to be clear, you mean both of them would not, you would only be appointed for a year or less and then you're running for five years, for a five-year term?
It's a five-year term, correct.
It'd be one for five year and, and the other term would be the remainder of and that's, I don't know what Chris Foley had on his.
I think it's, I think in April it will be two years. So he, I believe, not this past year, but the year before. So that would be was it in 19, so 2021, 22, 23, 24 would be the rest of his term. I believe he was the next one in line. So we can check.
Yeah.
But don't let, don't let that dissuade you right now. That's something. I don't want you to, want that to scare you away yet, so.
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and before, before we hear from Megan too, it'd be good to hear, just, and I know I've talked to each of you separate in phone conversations. But for me, it, it definitely, it seemed like it took at least eight or 10 months for me to get comfortable with the process, to understand really how the flow goes and be really comfortable relying on the other board members for different questions and it just, it, it's, it's, it's still a learning experience. I'm learning things every meeting. And with my background as an architect and I've been in front of planning boards and review boards and it's still, it's, it's it's, it's quite unique. Each meeting has its own flavor. And now in our transition with not having a town planner and awaiting a new um town economic developer coming in, it will be interesting to see how things change. I think right now, um, our challenge and the opportunity is to evolve with our paperwork, our posting to the site, the communication on our website and how all this works. I think we're in a wonderful place where we can, we can make strides in, in, and evolve the system that we had. And we're getting there. We're, we're still in transition, but we've, we've, we're definitely getting there.
You know, um, one thing I noticed going to town meeting was that, that there were a lot of comments from the public about all the articles we had been discussing on the planning board. And it, it was really interesting to get their perspective on it and hear their concerns. And I, I kind of felt like I wish they had gone to the planning board meetings, you know, and told us this stuff sooner.
Yep.
You know?
Yep, a lot of our decisions, obviously, and, and Matt and Bill know, when people show up to the meetings, it just, it becomes a more dynamic meeting. We learn a lot more, e- especially when it's a butters, that this is the property that we're helping to make decisions on and to hear from the people that live around it. And whether it's good or bad, wha- whatever it is, it really helps the decision process. So yes, it's, it's hard. So, and that's one of our, and um if you notice in the last meeting, we had town council. Jonathan Chimes was here. He couldn't make it tonight. He sent me a message, but he's going to watch the recording after. And if he has any comments, he's going to send them to us. But we were really looking at how to make our meetings more um attendable, I guess is the right word. So this whole Zoom or virtual meeting might not go away, even if we're in town hall. We'll try to figure out a way. We did see a rise in our attendance at first where the virtual meetings, we had a few meetings that we had more in attendance than usual. So hopefully um that would help as well.
Yeah.
Yeah. Well, we'll see. All right, Megan, would you like to jump on and, and share a little bit about why you'd like to be on the board and what you could bring to it and what your goals are?
Sure. Um, can you guys hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. Um, uh, so I've lived in Wakefield now for just over three years. And kind of a lifelong, like civic-minded individual. I saw the opening for the planning board come up and um thought that the board would be like well-fitted for my skillset. Um, so that's why I put my application in. Um, I live pretty close to downtown and so I'm pretty keen on um wanting to help out more with what the town's doing in regards to um housing and development around the downtown area as well as around the um train station area. So I'm between both of those. And, and also, you know, I talked, talked to Bill more about um uh working on the planning board, but also, you know, um, the joint work with the zoning board of appeals um and learning more about that as well as like to help with the revitalization of the downtown area, the downtown businesses. So it's interesting to hear specifically tonight um with, with the bank. That was, that was helpful during today's meeting. Um, so yeah, so that was, that was my biggest interest. I know my background um isn't, isn't particularly like focused on um anything with development or that. But um I do, I do product marketing for a software company. But I just felt that like my attention to detail, um, my, uh, I'm pretty inquisitive. I ask a lot of questions. And so I feel like that would be helpful for the board. And um, and I'm, I'm, I want to um do more for the town now that I've been here for a number of years. And I just thought, based off of what the board does, this would probably be a really good fit for my skillset and what I'm looking to help to do. And I haven't attended a recent meetings, but I have watched a bunch of the meetings um from the recordings on YouTube. So that's been really helpful to learn more about um what's been going on with, with the recent board meetings as well as watch the last um town council meeting, um which talked about the affordable housing um units um in the downtown area. So those were both very helpful to kind of get a little bit more up to speed.
Thank you. Um, Matt and Bill, do you have any comments or questions?
Um, one of my, one of my big things is um no one's ever an expert on planning issues with the rules and regulations, things like that. The big thing is, and I always encourage it, is just people ask questions because a lot of times you bring up good points that we just kind of gloss over because we do this. You know, we see a lot of these things over and over again. We'll look at a plan and we'll know, okay. You know, we've seen that, we know, we understand what, what's going on there. Having someone ask questions is a key to uh, you know, working through some issues that maybe just, you know, underlying that you don't really, you know, until you start discussing it, then really they don't come up. So um I'm happy to have someone who, who needs to learn and is willing to learn and you'll pick it up a- as it comes along. So that is not an issue right there.
Okay, good, good to know.
Yeah, I come from a planning background and, you know, I, I'm still learning different things. Every town's a little bit different. So um just, just being here next, asking questions, asking developers, some of those, you know, at a certain point, we, we cannot ask the same questions over and over again. If you have someone new to ask those questions we really want to have it, have asked, that's good to have someone to do that, so.
Have somebody else look dumb, right? Not you.
Well, not dumb. You just, we just, yeah, everyone needs to be educated.
Yeah.
Public, the um, the developer and the board all needs an education in asking those questions. Again, it's, it's like school. There's no stupid, stupid questions.
That's good.
Yeah.
It's nice to know that too. Um, I think some of it too is terminology, just knowing what the terms mean. Cause I've seen that, yeah, come up where it's like, oh, what do they mean by that? And you can't always just, it, it, the timing on the questions is key too.
Well, you'll be surprised even um in 30 years being an architect and understanding drawings. I'm still like, what's this line for? Why is this a dash line and that's a dotted line and this one's darker than the other one? And sometimes we're asking the questions because we really don't know what they are. But other times we're asking the questions because there's really no hierarchy to the drawings. We want them to read well. Like that limit of work line that we've talked about so much, that should be a big dark, some type of dash line that then has a legend letting us know what that is. And so many times there isn't a legend or you don't understand what that is, or it looks like another line and it's confusing. So yeah, we're, as Matt said, and we're forever asking those type of questions. So that's, that's acceptable. It's um something that's happened with being on the computer that has helped. I think everybody gets to see the drawings easier. You can zoom in and look at the PDF.
Yeah.
The, the people in attendance, sometimes when we're in town hall and that 24 by 36 board is up on an easel and it's turned towards us and nobody else can really see it and it's, my eyesight's not that great. It's like 20 feet away. It's, 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 it's tough. So we do ask for the, Matt has been amazing at bringing some of the requirements to the surface. So in the last year, the last two years, we've looked at what should our drawings have on them before they're sent to us? And not that our drawing, of the drawings that were, were bring, being presented were horrible. Some of them were missing important things and we wouldn't get those drawings until like the Monday before Tuesday meeting. Or we get them at the meeting. And it's so difficult to see those. So what we've set up is the plans need to be sent to us via PDF on the Wednesday by the end of the day before the Tuesday meeting. So we have that much time. That way we can also put together an agenda that works and, and get all that information up there on that Thursday. Uh, the other thing that we've done is there's certain things that have to be on the drawing, like the existing structures need to show. The dimensions, the um street, the names of the street. The reason for this whole project. It's like there's a lot of things that weren't on these drawings before that now, and, and what Matt did and what we did was we looked at all the different towns, well, not all, a couple of the different towns like ours around to see what their requirements were. And then we had many meetings looking at them. And I think it took us about a year to figure it all out, but that was something we added. And of course, um, with Paul Revis, our town planner, that's now, that retired the end of June, he was so helpful with explaining things and spending the extra time going over the information to make sure it was all in order and presented properly. And for example, tonight with uh Brian McGrail, Attorney McGrail, wanting to go over this, he would have a separate working session with Attorney McGrail and the savings bank to wordsmith out the correct policy or proposal or amendment or whatever needs to be done. And then he would bring it to the meeting or in front of us. So now we're going to have that type of working session at our next meeting or the September 8th meeting. So that, things are changing, but I think it's going to help too. It will help us all understand more of the process.
You know, um, one question I did have was how much prep work you do before the meeting? Um, reviewing the documents ahead of time, because it seems like, well, you're definitely coming to the meetings with more upfront knowledge than I've had. But um also the visiting of the sites, that kind of thing, do you coordinate those and do those together? And how much time do you spend outside of the meetings getting ready for them?
I'll defer this to Matt. He, he does some extra work. He goes to the Registry of Deeds. If you want to explain a little bit of that, Matt, and we can talk about the site stuff too.
Yeah, I, well, being from my background, I, if there's notes on the plan, I will actually go through and read the notes and pull up all the supporting documents. But that's, that's just part of what I usually do. I'm a Lancerator, so that's what I have to do. So I will, I will go through and sometimes I'll reconstruct the plan mathematically and see if it closes. You know, it, it's not something I should be doing, but if, if I see something that doesn't look right, um, I'll, uh, I'll investigate it and pull it up. And it, so for me, I, depending on what's going on, I, I may spend a few hours here and there working on stuff, but uh, again, that's part of what I do. So I roll that in with, if I'm doing another job. Once we usually get a plan set, so we're seeing a big, doing a big development, we'll get a plan set. And it'll just evolve from then. So you may go through the first time and review everything. And then we'll make suggestions. You want to go through and make sure that what you've asked for or what they said they were going to do, they've actually done. And what happens a lot is the more revisions you go through, you see some of the stuff that had been changed suddenly gets changed back. Sometimes it's, it's not, uh, it's, it's not an a fairish reason for why it happened. Other times it, it's just a mistake, but there are developers that will try to select, slide things through. So um the big thing is when we get the final plans, um, supposedly the final plans for review, we want to make sure that documents that we get back to sign are those exact ones. Because things have changed in between when we approve it and then what they try to have us actually sign. So little things like that.
Yeah. What about, um, what's the criteria for when something comes to the planning board versus some other one of the other committees? Cause I noticed things like um that Prospect Street development, that 107 Prospect Street that ended up not coming to the planning board, things like that. Maybe the Winship Mansion you did have, do some work on previously, but what's, is there some criteria for when it comes to you?
Yeah, there is. And subdivisions, you mentioned Prospect Street, that did come in front of us. So when there is one house on a piece of property and that property can be divided into more properties where houses can be built on, that comes in from, in front of the planning board. So zoning wise, when we look at a plan, um, we're not looking at um the zoning setbacks, the restrictions that are in this chart that we were talking about tonight that you mentioned. We are looking at um drainage, the road going into access to two or three houses. Like if you're talking about Prospect, the location of that road, um, the three houses that are going in there, the rain gardens and the drainage, the way that's going to look from the street, but listening to the butters about how the drainage into their land and how to fix that. So there's always opportunities. Well, it's doing this now, how do we fix it? So working with the engineers that are proposing this project and saying, hey, can you fix this? There's a river that runs right through here and every year washes all this out. How do we fix that? So that's some of the opportunity that we have too, is to even better the properties around when there's the opportunity to subdivide. So the subdivision rules and regulations that we have for the town. There's two different ways they happen that I've noticed and, and Matt and Bill, please jump in. But there is that pure subdivision like on 107 Prospect and this one house, it's being raised. And then there's three going in. And how is that all being set up? So it's a series of meetings and sometimes it's 12 months, 18 months, 24 months before that's all approved. What we do is we also work with the Conservation Commission, because that's really important to have them come in to help us understand more of their side, their expertise. And that came into play in more of the five, um, Glendale and Lovess and a lot of these other projects where there's a lot of different terrain features and possible wetlands that are in there. So anytime that's going on, we, we push it. We ask them to also have the Conservation Commission review. There are, there are, there are different triggers for projects. So for, um, let's see. On North Ave, Matt, with 175, it, the, the one with Tono and, and the apartments above it, we were brought in really just for the parking for review. We didn't have any other say in that, correct? Bill, if you recall?
Well, I just got up and told uh who my dog back and.
Oh, sorry. But I think we only taught, we only learned, we only were brought in to review some of the information for the parking, I think. I'd have to look back in my notes. So that went to the ZBA for the amount of work that was being done, the aesthetic quality, the amount of units per parking, the setbacks from the, from the, from the road and how all that was working. That, that was all ZBA.
There was a, something on uh the planning board we really liked doing when we did the Franklin. And, and kept that school looking, the colors, we were down to every detail. And uh it really became a nice project, you know? And I think that's what you wanted, to fit into the neighborhood, not to uh sort of exploit a neighborhood and just not be good aesthetically and, and uh sort of ruin sort of the ambiance of our town. That's what I like to keep. And uh, I, I, I really, that was the hot project, wasn't it, Matt? I mean, keeping them to what we wanted to do, like the Franklin School.
Yeah, it's so, what had happened years ago, uh, the, the planning board was, was the permit granting authority for certain projects. And they used to, the larger subdivision, or not larger subdivision, larger mixed-use properties. What had happened at that point is think, these projects would have to go to the planning board for most of this process and then the ZBA for a smaller portion of it. At some point, those projects all got shifted to the ZBA. So basically, the planning board does not do too many of those oversight review of those sites anymore. I think there's, is a couple, like if it's a school, school building being reused, uh, the planning board would be the permit granting authority for those. But basically for all of the housing, uh, the planning board is not involved with that at all. We, we really should be on some of them because some of the decisions with the sites, um, how the sites are set up.
Will judge them best, so.
Yeah. Maybe you brought Crescent, the new one on Crescent. When you brought Crescent, the new one on Crescent, that was a town council. We, um, we don't really have any say in that. We do have, uh, the part we're pushing for a lot of these mixed use, meaning restaurant retail on the first floor, a couple stories of residents above. We've, we've pushed for the affordable housing to be up at 18% in those. And that's something that is really important for us to get to, um, a state number. So we do receive funding and of course it just helps to have more affordable housing in Wakefield. So people who have been living here a long time or young families or young couples that want to relocate to here can afford to. And, and that's something that to me is important, um, for the, for us on the planning board. So we've had, um, I think that was like in 2016, we put together a, um, package for what the numbers need to be for each of the new developments that are coming in. And 18% was the number we came up with to help bring us from the, at the time it was like five or six percent. I believe now we're getting close to eight percent. Our goal is to get to 10% soon and then hopefully up to 12%. But 10% is our first goal to get to. And I was hoping we would be there by 2020, but we're not. So, well, 2020 is not over yet. The Crescent Street 40B housing does go in, it will help. But that's a lot of stuff that I learned about too. And there are, uh, 40B housing is a state approved process that allows developers to go through a set of steps that bypass a lot of the town's rules and regulations. But also it still does go in front of the ZBA to help control it. So we don't have no say, but we do have some control early on about how many stories, how many units and what other benefits that that will have. And we try with, um, a 40B, all the units in there will count towards the percentage because there's a certain state required number that have to be affordable.
Right. You mentioned like the aesthetic aspect of some of the development. How much say do you have when we're really like the aesthetics? Like, because one thing I noticed is that a lot of the new, um, buildings being built recently, they're really close to the street, like even on Prospect Street, that house was set back. And now, well, they're going to squeeze three or four houses on that. So obviously they're going to put it up closer to the street. But there was a new duplex built on Main Street recently. It looks just really close to the street, especially when you know what it looked like before, you know what I mean?
Well, that's, um, and Matt and Bill, please jump in. I don't have to be the only one to talk. But on Main Street, if it's the one where the two units, two buildings went in, and I believe they're side by side duplexes, and it was the, uh, where, um, Osterman's is.
Yeah, yeah.
So there's a different type of plan, an A and R plan, so approval not required. And we can endorse those plans and we do have some say, but when they are on a main street with no separate subdivision going in, with like to think of the cul-de-sac and a couple of units. When we don't have that and they have access right to a already approved street and the A and R means we can't, we don't really have a lot of say in what those houses can look like. They have to go by the zoning setbacks and rules and regs there. Um, sorry, the zoning setbacks from that table too. Um, or they go for a variance in front of the zoning board to get certain things changed. But as long as the frontage in that specific residence zone is kept and if they do have the amount of square footage on a regular sized lot to allow for a certain number of dwelling units, they can do it. And we really don't have a lot of say to aesthetics and, and Matt and Bill, we, we've sat there and say, you know, can't you make this look nicer? Can't you do this and that? And sometimes developers understand that and they do go and add certain things, um, to make it aesthetically pleasing, but they don't have to. Matt, is, Bill, is anything I'm missing?
Basically, we have control over the roadway and the, the size of a lot and the access and frontage. Anything on that lot that all falls to, um, zoning issues. And as long as they build this house to, to meet, you know, the current zoning regulations, they're allowed to do that. So in the case of that Main Street one, the, the fronted step back was, I think, 15 feet and they basically put the building at the minimum, which is 15 feet. So in that case, there really should have been a, a, some kind of zoning there to average the setbacks of all those houses to make them look, you know, so they work out. But that's some of the flaws we have in our zoning bylaws. So, which is unfortunate. With a lot of zoning things, there are minimums set for everything and that's usually what developers build too, you know? If it's a 10 foot side setback, they'll build right up to 10 foot. So it's unfortunate that houses are put in and they've got two parking spaces and that's it. They really should have more than that. But at that point, you gotta go and change the zoning. So we don't, we don't, we, we really have no say on any of that issue or any of those issues. And a lot of time, and just so you know, so if, if someone's proposing a subdivision and they come before us and they meet all the rules and regulations, there's, there's no waivers required. We basically have to sign off on that plan. We have no choice. If it meets all, all the, uh, dimensional requirements, it's, it's basically at that point, we just, it's a, it's a statutory process. We sign off on it. Almost every subdivision that comes before us needs a waiver. Once you need a waiver, then we have a lot more latitude to say, well, you know, if you want to have the waiver, then you need to do some better improvements or, you know, you need to make some concessions. So.
Oh, okay. That's when we get into the trees.
Right.
We get into the walkable spaces. And that's where we talk about the cut and fill and how many trucks are going to be leaving this site or coming into the site? And what's the impact on the, is it going to be blasting? If there's going to be blasting, we want your blasting expert in here in front of the public hearing. So the abutters can ask all the questions. And so the fire chief or marshal could come in and make sure everything is set. And we've had that. And it's great to, um, be involved in it because you do learn a lot about the concerns of different people. And that's, and, and I know Bill and Matt and the other members of the board that we had, it's, it's, um, that's when we really start to understand the impact of some of these projects. And, and that's where we get deeper into those concerns. And if, if more people from the public would attend and voice their opinions in the planning stage, it would be a much better town. Because when somebody from the public or two or three people that are abutters get up and speak their minds about what they would like to see, most of the attorneys and developers in town listen to them. And because they want to do more work in this town and they, they want to hear that. So, and, and most of them will go through that process and the projects do get better because of that. There's no perfect project, but at the same time, there's a lot of input that as a public that's missing that I wish we could do. And I know one of the newer goals I have for the board moving forward too, is to how to get more people from the public involved in our hearings and meetings.
Yeah. The other question I have is the gap left with Paul Reviss leaving and the work he did, um, is, can you talk at all about like the work he did and how you see, can, can we pitch in on that or like what was he doing?
Well, we are, and he came, um, I came onto the board in 2014 and I remember sitting in his office, um, months before that, coming into the, uh, onto the board and trying to understand how this all works. And he, he's an architect and a real estate lawyer, I believe, or had a law degree. Uh, so he really understood both sides of it and his knowledge and his experience was just incredible. But Matt's been here a little bit longer and Bill, and they could explain more of what he's done. But he, from my experience, what he, he really reaches out to the bigger community of what other planners are doing, what other towns, whether the cities are doing. He's, he, he cares so much about open space bylaws, about downtown um, outdoor seating, how to get benches there, how to get more people involved, how to, how to make it safe to cross Main Street. You know, this is really what Paul cared about. Of course, there's so many other things and he listened to every email, every phone call, every person that walked into his office and complained about whatever it is that was going on in the town. So he had a good understanding of the pulse of the town. But Matt and Bill, um, probably know a little bit more. I just tried to summarize it quickly. But Paul coordinated a lot of, a lot of this information for us.
And how much of that is going to be taken on by the new town economic developer versus put to either the planning board or other, other groups?
That's a good question. I'm going to dial up, um, Mr. Mayo right now and have him come on and answer that. But because during, um, town council put together a really nice, um, job application for this position, moving from a town planner to an economic developer. And we know that's different. I mean, the name's different. How much of that overlaps? I'm not sure. But in the application and the bullet points in there, they were not covering all of what the town planner did as daily tasks and, um, the attendance of different meetings and all. But during town meeting, our town administrator, Mr. Mayo, did get up and say that the jobs would overlap, that the new economic developer would be taking on the responsibilities of the town planner. If I remember correctly, I'd have to go back and watch it, but I believe that's what was.
Yeah.
That's what I got out of it.
Yeah. Right.
Matt, did I get that right? You're muted.
Yeah.
Yeah. I'm concerned.
You guys, it sounds like you've all been on, on the planning board for quite a while, like five years or more?
Yes. I'm the, I'm the more junior person, um, on the board from the twen- from 2014.
Wow.
Yeah. And Matt, I'm not sure, were you about five years before that?
Uh, this is my fourth election, so I've been on for 16 years and I just gone on for another five years, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, I saw your name on the ballot.
Did you vote for him?
Yeah, yeah.
Well, Matt has some principles and he did not vote for himself because.
Myself, so.
He was being, he was being, he was unopposed, so.
Yeah.
Hey, Bill, how long have you been on? 1924?
Whatever you've been on, Matt. Matt, what did you say you were on?
You were, you're like another four, three or four years longer than me. So you're close to 20 years now, so.
Wow.
Yeah, since, you know, we all, we started getting involved when, uh, we had, uh, Gates of Greenwood and, you know, not so smart development. And, uh, you know, picketing in front of the, uh, I remember, uh, in front of the, um, library and actually Channel Five was there. Vision 2000, that was a committee we had. And, uh, you know, watching all the developments and stuff. It was pretty cool. And, uh, then, um, people started leaving the planning board and then we might be able to do better. So then we ran through it. And here we are. Still.
Wow. What keeps you guys like on the board for 16, 19 years? What, what keeps you coming back?
We begged, we begged Matt to come back.
I would say stupidity or something at this point. You know, uh, it's, it's one of those things. You kind of need to have some people on you. You need, that's the reason why it's a five year term. You need, it takes a while for you to learn the process. And you need, just for the town's sake, you need to have some experience constantly on there. So, um, I would love to have been running against two other people that really wanted it and, and turn it over to someone else. But, you know, at this point, there was no one else. So, um, I'm just trying to, you know, continue the, the consistency and make sure that it gets passive, passed on.
And some of the history too, uh, Paul Semenza's seat. Paul, he, his character, his understanding, his background as a lawyer, really helped us understand. He brought just a unique thing. I believe he was on the board for 25 years or so. And in his, um, yeah, in, in his change of careers with his new position, he was really unable to make the meetings because of his, his, his time commitment. So after missing more than a year's worth of meetings, it, he reluctantly resigned. Um, and our other board member, Chris Fauley, um, started his own business and been very successful as a paver. Um, and he brought a lot to the board too, with his experience with understanding, of course, Wakefield and how the town works. And in the same situation with the time of starting new business and having a young family, it was a lot. So the board had to give and unfortunately with more than a year of, of being absent, he resigned. So, and, and that's what we run into sometimes. I know my position was also to, when, when I came on the board in 2014, it was to take over someone's spot that resigned. So there's only three members now, as you know, and we need five. And the whole idea that if one of us right now is sick or can't make it, I had to travel. And we couldn't have a meeting and, and that really sucks. I hate to say it that way, but it, it does to know that we can't have a meeting because one of us can't make it. And luckily we've been healthy and it's been going all right.
Yeah, I remember we do, yeah, if we, we missed a meeting, we, we missed two meetings and we couldn't, we couldn't even function on the plans we were looking at. I remember like, what days after my hernia operation, I came in a little gingerly, but sat down there.
That's right.
You know?
Now you can do it from your hospital bed.
Yeah.
It is helpful. It, it is, um, it is helpful to be able to watch the recordings of the meetings.
Right.
I found that too, because I'd pick up things I didn't catch the first time.
Uh, same here. I've watched some of the recordings and I'm like, wow, I'm glad I watched this because I didn't remember saying that the way I said it.
Yeah.
And, and, and of course you want to be consistent, but just like anything else, as you learn more information at the next meeting and to Bill's point, if I missed two meetings, if we did have five members and I missed two meetings, I really miss a lot. But if I could go back and watch the recording, which we do have now, um, it helps tremendously to, to be able to pick back up. Um, I don't know. Um, I just wanted to give a chance to, I know it's, it's about 8:30. Uh, Megan, did you have any questions or any comments or? I hope we're not scaring you away.
No, not at all. Just from logistics, um, standpoint. Um, would you recommend that we jump on for the September eighth meeting as well? Um, because I know that's before the, I believe the discussion for filling the seats is on the September 14th.
It is.
Okay.
We are.
So, um, so before that, um, is the September eighth meeting. And I just wanted to know from like a logistic standpoint, if you would recommend that we jump on that meeting as well.
I recommend that, um, just because there'll be items discussed that if, um, appointed to the board, then you'll be, understand, you won't have to go back and watch the recording. But I, I recommend everybody in the town to join the meeting and not wait till town meeting to go and just try to figure this out. But yes.
Yeah, I guess that was another one of my questions was, um, I know that's one of the goals is to get more people attending the meetings. Have you guys thought of any creative ways or solutions that you've thought of to get more, um, town members, um, attending the meetings?
Um, I have not. I, I know passing word around when we had focus groups for Invision Wakefield and some of the things, the Albion Arts, and we would be out. I would be there, Matt might be there, Bill could be there. One of the board members might be there to be present, to help understand, to answer questions, to be visible, to say, hey, come on, come to the next board meeting and we'll be discussing this. So recently, we haven't had the opportunity to do that with COVID, but I think we're open to any ideas where that could be, without going on the Wakefield Community page. Which, which I've been on there and sometimes I respond and I say, please attend the meetings. It's really good. And maybe once a month I get on there and I'll find something that I can add that comment to. If you'd like to know more and you really, we value your opinion, please log on to the next planning board meeting. We meet the second and fourth Tuesdays of the month and we'd love to have you there so you can share your opinion and our decisions will be will be better educated to make decisions. So I don't know, Megan, if you have any ideas, that's, that would be great too.
I'll start thinking of some.
Yeah.
Well.
Go ahead, Joanne.
Oh, it's okay. You can go.
Um, I just, my other question was around, just like besides getting more people to attend the meetings, what are any other, like the big challenges that the board has recently faced or the last couple of months or a couple of years that you guys have tried to overcome or, you know, looking to improve?
Butler Woods was really challenging. I think we put about two years into that subdivision up off of Butler Ave, off of Water.
Oh, really?
Yeah, and it's, it's really tough to work that long on a project and to see it not go through. I don't know. That was really disappointing for me. And it's not because the project didn't go through because of funding, because of any issues from the planning board. The site's contaminated. The, a lot of the old high school was dumped there and this contaminated soil and stuff. And that, that's all. It's who's going to clean it up, who's going to pay for it. So that's, that's a big thing. And unfortunately, we had good, and Matt and Bill, I know we, we haven't talked about this as a board, but that was really disappointing and discouraging for me with all the time that we spent into that. It was a lot of hard work to make sure we're listening to all the butters, sidewalks, looking at the, adorning streets, understanding all about the blasting and cutting down the amount of houses we're going in there and the way the street would, would turn in and really understanding the contours of the land. I don't know. Bill, Matt, any? Anything to add?
No, it's just, it was very disappointing. I know from all those tick bites. Walking, and yeah, right, afraid of fracturing rock and we'll get it to it. There was explaining every way that a rock could be fractured and, and all that stuff. And, you know, and then nothing happened. So.
You can walk up through there. It's actually really nice to walk through. Woods Wise. I don't know. Cool things that we've done. We've had Dennis Fazio from the DPW come in and talk to us about trees. And we did some research, the Arnold Arboretum and Mount Auburn Cemetery. And this is something else that Paul Revis was really on top of and would help us with resources. But really, what's the recommended street trees for subdivisions and possibly for downtown and, and Albion Street could use some trees. And of course, with Invision Wakefield, where we're looking at that going through. If you were at, watched the last town council meeting, you saw the presentation on that. So this is, to me, that's the uplifting side. And as I've shared with each of the members of the board, like my goal for being on the board is to make Wakefield more walkable, more pedestrian friendly, more bikeable, something where you can, like, my daughter and I, Sunday night, I think it was Sunday night, yeah, we went for a walk downtown. And we came, we could hear people cheering on Vets Field when we were coming around down Lafayette. And we walked down and there was a soft girl softball game going on that we watched some of. And, and then back around, but no, it was Saturday night. That's right. It was Saturday night. Downtown was so dead with everything going on. But it was so nice to walk, just be able from our house here near Molton Park and Gould Street to be able to safely walk with streetlights all the way down to downtown. Now, now that's something that's, you can do from the west side. But what if you want to walk from Nahann Street or from the Dolberg area or from Greenwood? Can you walk downtown safely with lights, safe pathway? Maybe benches to rest on if it's a long walk for people. Is it wheelchair accessible the whole way from here to there? So to me, that, those type of things, that's important. So a, a plan to, are we drawing people downtown? I think so many families right now have rediscovered hiking and walking neighborhoods and biking together and doing little trips like that, having picnics on the common. It's just, it's something you see all the time now. So one of the positive parts of COVID for me has been, I think, a lot of people who didn't realize how nice that is to do, realize that it is nice.
Yeah.
So I'm hoping that gets some traction. And I'm hoping, and haven't discussed it with Bill or Matt yet, that part of our next, to see how Invision Wakefield goes. But our next part is to see, like, how do we connect these nodes that lie outside of downtown to downtown? What is, as a planning board, what are we going to do about that?
When you, when you support an article like a town meeting, when you went up and said, you know, we've talked about this article, that article, and we give it our blessing, basically. Is everybody on the board expected to vote in favor of that after hearing people from the town? Do we? Good.
We, we're not always in agreement on that, but a lot of times we'll get to a place. And, and sometimes Bill will disagree with something, Matt will, or I will. With three members, it's a little bit more difficult. But with five members, it, it's like, yeah, one or two people might disagree with that, but three would vote for it. So the majority would be the, the planning board is recommending favorable action for a proposed change to a zoning bylaw or amendment to a bylaw. So that's how it happens, but it doesn't happen over one meeting. It happens over usually two minimum, three, four meetings. And you got to witness that in the springtime, where we did go over a lot of comments for different changes for zoning proposals.
Okay, so the board doesn't all have to agree, but you could have somebody disagree as long as you have a majority on the board.
Yep. And when we're talking about voting on things, if you have a party that you're from, you work with, you can also abstain from. Bill mentioned the Gates of Greenwood. So did that go on for nine years on the board, the completion of that? Yeah, and, and Bill would have to abstain from any votes or discussions when it came, well, not discussions, but the voting side of it. He, he would not be allowed to vote because he lives there.
Oh.
Yeah. If my firm was doing Bergmeyer Associates, if we were doing a project in Wakefield, I'd have to abstain from that project. We did one in Melrose recently, which was, which was cool. I'm glad it wasn't in Wakefield, but it was, it was nice for that. That, that's another thing. So as a board member, there's times where you just can't vote by law.
Okay.
Well, I think I don't, I don't, I can't believe if we have a, if we have five people at this meeting. It's been so long. Is it, what, what has it been that we had five?
Two years.
Yeah. Unbelievable.
Wow.
It's unbelievable. And it's nice to get other opinions than your two opinions, Bill and Matt. Get more opinions.
Oh, come on. You never vote with me, Bill. You vote with Matt. Come on.
I know. But hey, he's my neighbor. He's across the street.
That's true.
I'm only joking.
Yeah.
Yeah. It would be nice to have a lot of, a full board. It's very exciting to me.
Do you do a lot of like going down to town hall and asking people questions there and, and talking to like Attorney McGrail before these meetings or at all?
No, and I, I don't know if we really can. So we, the people we do talk to though, talk to the town engineer. We talk to people on the Conservation Commission. We talk to other people, not usually on the ZBA.
On the ZBA.
Yeah, like I, I've attended a few meetings. I might even go tomorrow night for a little bit. Just to see what's going on with the, the head of the lake. But there's yeah. I, I don't know if Bill, if Bill or Matt talk to other people, but because of open meeting laws, the three of us can't talk. The way, well, with five members of the board, three members of the board cannot get together and discuss things. It has to happen in a an open meeting that is open, meaning it's open to the public. The public can attend. And it, the agenda is set and it's been published. So there are some other rules for open meeting laws. And as a member of the board, you actually have to go through and take a test with all of the different rules about open meetings. Matt, do we just have to take that test once or is it every so many years? Do you remember?
I believe every year we have to certify to it. So.
Every year we have to certify to it, but to take the test over again. I, I think it's
The same thing. It's, it's a simple test.
Yeah. So it's on the MassGov website. Well, um, I'll always be available, Joanne and Megan, if you have any questions outside. And I'm, I don't know about Matt and Bill, but you, you might want their opinion and not just mine. But in, if you ever want to give me a call or send me a message email wise, please do. I, as far as Eva invites for the town council, once we get on the agenda officially, we'll make sure that you're both notified about that meeting.
Great.
Yeah.
All right. Let me, um, I think we have you share my screen, review and discuss applicants for planning board vacancies. Hey. I wish there was three, but actually now it's, do we have to make a decision? I don't know. It's two seats, there's two people. Okay. Items not anticipated by the chair. You know, I, I really don't have any tonight. I know the Crescent Lane, I'm interested to find out, but that's tomorrow night, ZBA. Town Council talked about it. And if any of the board members want to learn a little bit more about what our town council feels about it, it was really interesting listening to their passion for what it should be, what it shouldn't be. Paul DiNocco really spoke his mind as usual about affordable housing and how important that was. But most of the town council members that spoke thought it was out of scale. There was just something that didn't fit into the neighborhood. So if, if that's worth looking at, I know, again, we don't have any control over it, but it, I just like being involved and understanding more of the, the decision making going on there. So I don't have any other items. I did speak about the meeting notes and Susan and I will get together. It, it's something that I just have to do and make sure that we get them all out. But let's anticipate for the September eighth meeting that we're going to have probably, I think, four sets of notes to review and approve. The computer I'm on, I have a VPN access now to the planning board folders. I have access to all the meeting minutes. And one of the jobs I'll do in the next couple of days, one of the tasks is to get all of those to Sherri Dalton to make sure she has them and they can be posted to our, our site. I also, on my agenda, I want to speak with and find out, and Susan can help me with this, is how do the things get posted? Because I did find out this week, this morning, that the planningboard@wakefield dot MA, the, the wet, the email address anyway, it doesn't go to all members of the board. It only goes to one email site, pb@planningboard@wakefield. So now I have access to that. And I was checking out all the emails. So that's something that I think as a board, we need to figure out a better process, like how information gets distributed. I don't know if anybody has any comments on that. I'm still learning how we can do it properly through the town.
I don't know, but I'd like to figure that out. I mean, sounds kind of important.
Right. One thing we haven't had is a lot of support in the past on how this all works. Even when you look at the town website in the last couple of years, it's really changed a lot. And I think now is our time. It's our, our opportunity to make our planning board website, to have the items that we receive as plans on a Wednesday could also get posted up there in the agenda on that Thursday or Friday, meaning if somebody wants to be prepared for a meeting, a town member, one, public wants to be prepared for a meeting, they can go to the planning board website and click on that plan and look through them. How awesome would that be? It just, it's something that has not been available and we need to make it available.
Yeah.
That's, that's my, my goal for this week and next week is to get that happening.
Well, that's good. Now, do you email the, the planning board members with stuff beforehand? If it's not up there on the website, how do you get it to the planning board members?
Good question. Paul Revis would send it out to all members. And it's important that you do not reply all, because again, that's sending a message outside of an open meeting, a public meeting without the public being invited. So when you respond to anything, like right now, when I forward something, I forward it to Matt and then I forward it separately to Bill. And I don't want to hear back from them. Unless something's wrong, they let me know. But that's how we've been sending things out. Susan, our new clerk, this is our second meeting, and she has been really good at trying to understand the process and very patient. But we, we're we're trying to figure out a better way, better process.
Okay. Thank you.
Sorry if I didn't answer that directly, but no, you cannot, I cannot email everybody on the board something.
But you do email them individually.
Right. The town planner could send everything out. Brian McGrail could send it, but we need a better depository. We need, if the Wakefield Planning Board, planningboard@wakefield email, maybe that gets automatically distributed or forwarded to all planning board members. Or there's a way to click on something that automatically distributes, this distribution list. Or it goes up onto the planning board website and we just need to send a message out to the planning board members that, please check or send a, a link, please check the website. Here's the latest information. The plans are up there, the agenda is up there, the meeting notes are up there. That is the option I'm, I'm really hoping for.
Okay.
To hopefully limit some email, have one place where the correct information is. And not like, here's some emails, here's a post, here's, I don't know.
Yeah.
Bill, Matt, do you have any comments on that? Or suggestions?
No, I don't have anything.
Would both of you like to see, here's, here's the latest stuff? Go to the website. Actually, Susan's calling me right now. Hi, Susan. No, I can't hear you. Should I? Hold on, hold on. I think I could, I could get you to be heard. Hold on. You're there. I can see you. And you're unmuted. Can you guys hear Susan? No.
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 No. I can't, hold on. Susan is on speaker on my phone. Nope. All right, that's not going to work because it was really loud screeching. Okay. Okay. No, it didn't. And I only learned about that this morning. So Susan sent it out through the Wakefield Planning Board email, thinking we all received it and we didn't. And I found out this morning for sure, that's not how it works. Right. Right. Okay. And I can relay that right now. So Susan said that with the fail this week, that her and I were hoping it would work through the Wakefield Planning Board email. We're going to work with Jen and the posting to the website to make sure that works. But Susan can also send it email wise out to the planning board members. That's what we're going to do for the next meeting. Get a better way. All right. Thanks for calling. Thanks. Okay. All right, I'm, all right, bye. That was interesting. Sorry for that little delay, but Susan couldn't be heard. She realized that, so she called me and wanted to voice her. Yeah. So that is something that didn't work. And I know, again, we're still working this out. So no problem. All right. Any, any items by, any comments from the other members of the planning board? All right. Thanks, Bill.
I'm all set.
All right. Okay, so item number nine, elections. Should we move the board elections to a future date?
Nope.
Nope.
Nomination for president, chairman.
Sorry.
Chair a second.
Seconding.
All right. Aye.
Aye.
See, this isn't fair. So that's, that's not fair. But okay, I do accept the nomination and I've enjoyed being chair and I hope I could do a better job. Coming up with everything we've learned in the last six months with COVID. And I, I really truly feel, and I was so nervous with Paul. This is my acceptance speech. I was so nervous with Paul retiring because he was such a crutch for me and I, I miss him terribly. But this is, this is a good, this is a good positive time for us. I think as a board, we do have an opportunity to evolve and grow and take on more responsibility in the town for the future planning. And, and that's something that I'm hoping we can do. And five, 10 years from now, I'm, I'm really hoping that with different grants and different approved plans that Wakefield crossing Main Street won't feel like you're, you're chanting death and other, other things of little outcroppings of parks and seating areas and outdoor dining will just become the norm. So. Hey, thank you. So what, what's my term until April? All right. Thank you. Thanks for your vote, Matt. Thanks for your vote, Bill. I appreciate it. With that, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn.
Yep.
All right. Meeting adjourned. Thank you all. Thank you, Joanne. Thank you, Megan. Appreciate. Thank you so much, Susan. Yep. Have a good evening.